So is this the signal to go get some water before we have to start?
We are in the countdown right now.
I got it. So five seconds. Okay, you can go Bob.
The meeting will please come to order. This is a committee of the whole meeting of the village board of the village of Willmet. Normally, we wouldn't call the roll in a meeting like this. We just look around the table and see who is there. But given that we're remote, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll and noting in advance that both trustee Kersman and trustee Sullivan will be joining the meeting slightly late.
All right, trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
And president Polinski.
Here. Okay, so we have five of the seven of us. We do have a quorum. We can begin the meeting. This meeting is being conducted remotely via the Microsoft Teams software. For those watching the video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state did amend the Open Meeting Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the village board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the new provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on, actually not as usual, this is a committee of the whole meeting, normally might not be broadcast because it's a working session of the board. But tonight it is being broadcast live on local access cable channel six and on the internet on our YouTube channel. The URL for that is youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. And there are some interactive features there if you want to watch on YouTube instead of channel six. Again, youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live with no spaces or dashes or anything like that. So a committee of the whole meeting is a working meeting of the village board under the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Anytime a group of elected officials get together, it is deemed a public meeting, and as such, we provide notice and an agenda, and it is open and available to the public. So that's what it is tonight. It's a little less formal. You'll see we're not, the men aren't wearing ties. Many of us will be using first names instead of of using our more formal addresses and the like. And so you will proceed on that basis. I will note, it looks like trustee Kersman and trustee Sullivan have both joined the meeting. Is that right? Would you guys confirm that?
I am here.
I am here.
Okay, great. So we do now have all seven members of the board, and you guys didn't miss anything. Just my usual sort of starting comments. So with that, and again, this is a working group, a working session of the board, a public comment will come after our discussion of the budget, as it is in all public meetings, public comment is part of the meeting. But at this point, I will turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Berman, Mr. Halligan, Ms. Malloy, and the rest of the budget team. And you know what? I'm going to mute everyone. Just so guys who are about to talk, unmute yourself. But I'm going to mute everyone just as a way to start here. So, all right. So Mike and Eric and Melinda, you're you're ready to roll, but you have to unmute yourself now.
All right. Thank you, President Polinski. Eric's going to pull up the presentation here, and we'll get started. Before we move into the slides, and it is a fairly lengthy presentation, so please bear with us. We'll try to move through it as quickly as we can. We first want to just acknowledge and thank the village board for the time and effort you've each put into preparing for this meeting. It was only two weeks ago, we delivered an almost 500-page document that is incredibly detailed and very complex. And the effort that you've each put in helps to make sure that this is a thoughtful and productive discussion tonight. So thank you for that. This is intended to be a very high-level review of the fiscal year 2021 budget. You know, we don't plan to get into line item detail reviews of each department's proposals. However, all of our departments here are represented this evening. So if there are questions, please jump in at any time throughout the presentation, and Eric, Melinda, I, or one of the departments will respond accordingly. So Eric, if you can flip to the first slide. So in general, when we put this budget together for the board's consideration, our goals were to do everything we could to maintain the services that our residents and our business owners expect and reply and rely upon, and to minimize the impact on our taxpayers. There are only two increases in the budget from a revenue standpoint that impact our taxpayers. And Eric, I don't know if anyone else can see the presentation. I lost it there for a second.
Yeah, it just got lost. I think he just needs to move the.
Yeah, one second. Something happened with the introduction. Give me one moment.
All right.
Yeah, I now have, there we go.
Okay, so we have a property tax levy increase that is lower than last year and less than what we'd initially projected. So our increase is at 3.97%. We'll talk about that in more detail later on. And then, as the board knows, the stormwater utility fee will be increasing each the next several years as we incur additional debt service for the various phases of the neighborhood storage improvement project. There are no other tax or fee increases. The previously projected a 4% sewer rate increase as well as a 2.5% or 3% increase on our refuse rate. As we prepared the budget, we're able to hold the line on those fees as well as any other fees that we currently assess. And importantly, this budget for '21 includes significant investment in our infrastructure. We're fully funding our infrastructure investment programs such as our roads, alleys, and bricks. We're continuing to invest substantial sums into our sewer improvement program as well as into our water plant. So on the next slide here, you know, we identified just a few of the many goals that are in our budget document. Each department has prepared numerous goals that they'll work towards during the course of the fiscal year. What we've done here is try to pull out just a handful of those goals that may be of interest to the board or the community or are slightly different than what we have in previous years. The first goal, which is the minority business enterprise program, this is something a resident had brought up to us several months ago, and we had indicated that staff would conduct some research. We've completed that.
Hey, hey, Mike, it looks like, at least on my screen, I've been getting like a cycling through of the trustees, even though we're all on mute. And I don't, we don't have the, there we go. Now we've got the.
The goals again.
The screen back.
All right, I noticed that, too. If it keeps happening, we'll maybe take a quick break and try to figure that out. So that MBE program, we've completed some research. We'd like to bring it to a village board committee in early 2021, just for discussion to determine what possible next steps we can take. Also, in the budget is the commitment to developing a strategy to enhance our diversity recruitment efforts in our public safety departments. We know it's an area we need to improve upon. It's not something easily accomplished, but it's certainly something we want to work towards and do a better job of. So that is something we'll be working on during 2021 and beyond. From an IT standpoint, this budget maintains and enhances our commitment to our IT infrastructure. Importantly, it'll provide more efficiencies for employees and for customer service, but it also continues to enhance our cybersecurity capabilities. We, the village board is aware of our commitment to working on the comprehensive plan and rewriting that document beginning in '21. The Plan Commission has already started its review of a draft RFP, and we hope to have a presentation from John Adler to the board in late November, early December with an updated status on that project and the proposed scope of work before we release that RFP. And finally, Bridgette, Dan, and their team will continue their management and oversight of some of the village's most significant infrastructure investments over the past many decades. So Eric, if you can move on to the next slide. So this budget methodology slide, this is the third time the board has seen this slide. We started it at our mid-year financial review, but it's probably one of the most important slides in the presentation because it lays the foundation for how we prepared our budget and how we're going to manage our budget as we move into '21, given the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. And most importantly, next year, we're going to, we're going to have to manage our budget. And I see we're cycling through a little bit again. Peter, I think you're on the call here. I don't know if there's anything you could try to figure out as we're working through these slides, but if it keeps, oh, there we go.
Okay, I was just corresponding with Eric separately. It looks like either somebody is accidentally or somehow there's a new feature in here called spotlight mode that keeps turning on. I'm going to keep an eye out for it, and I can turn it off quickly if it just accidentally pops up again. So sorry for the technical bumps here. We'll figure out what's going on.
All right. Thanks, Peter. So as I was saying, I think next year, more than any other year, we're going to have to manage to the numbers. And what is in this budget document is our plan and is our guide, but it's not set in stone. And as we continue our monthly reviews with the village board and we track our revenue performance, we'll have to make adjustments as we move forward. And while we think our revenue projections are very conservative, and we have a fair, fair level of confidence that we'll be able to hit those, we need to be prepared if we're not, and we'll continue to manage that as we progress. Next slide, Eric. So as the board knows, and we've talked about, we're in a really strong financial position. The village board and the village staff have worked really hard and thoughtfully to make sure that we're positioned to weather a storm like the pandemic. You know, just, you know, less than 10 years ago, we had less than $3 million in reserves. Starting this year, we had more than 15 million. So the board and the staff have worked hard to fortify reserves, which gives us a lot of flexibility. Maintaining our AAA bond rating, we'll talk about it towards the end of the presentation, but that's had really positive impacts on our future tax levy projections and is going to have really important benefits to our taxpayers. And importantly, the work the board has done to address our public safety pensions, you know, provides us light at the end of the tunnel. So as we remain committed to our amortization transition, and we finish that out with significant contributions from our general fund reserve in 2021 and '22, you'll see on page 30 of your budget document, the property tax levy projections, those pension contributions are projected to decline in future years, which has a really significant impact on our tax levy. So it's important that we remain committed to that. We believe we still have the ability to implement that transition, and we'll keep working towards that.
Yeah, and just, just let me, let me interject here for a sec. Mike, just, you know, I don't know if people have seen the Chicago Tribune article, but, you know, one of our neighboring communities is figuring out just how reliant they are, and in essence, a sensitivity they didn't know they had because it's not of the normal economic type, but that they're the local university and the people who come to visit it and the, and the people who are attending it have a huge impact on their economy, the hotels, the restaurants, even, even other sales tax items. And, and, you know, where we are relative to some of our neighbors is actually very, very good. And testament to the staff, for sure, in terms of the fiscal management over the past, you know, 10 years since the last recession.
And that strong financial position allows us to use these reserves, which are, you know, they're, the other word for general fund reserves are rainy day funds. And this is certainly a unforeseen crisis where it would be appropriate to use those reserves to continue to provide the services that we need to deliver. Now, of the nearly $2 million in reserves we're proposing to utilize for next year, nearly $700,000 of that was already planned. So that was for our pension transition and rewriting the comprehensive plan. 1.2 million of it is related to COVID-19 revenue impacts. And we do have a very small structural operating deficit, but we wanted to make that an important point tonight. And as we move forward, it's, it's about $130,000 in this budget. And we have the time to think through this patiently and thoughtfully and figure out a good plan. But if we don't address it, that's going to compound over time. And as our expenses continue to grow and our revenues, you know, flatline or decrease, even forgetting or putting COVID aside, you know, that, that can be problematic in future years. So that's something we're going to work on early in 2021 with cooperatively with the board. It's not a revenue problem or an expense problem. It's a combination of both. So we'll work on addressing that and coming up with various, you know, solutions and plans to fix that problem moving forward. Ultimately, as the budget document indicates, despite using 1.9 million dollars of reserves next year, we still project to exceed our 30% target, which is the target rating agency's peg for AAA-rated communities. Our actual general fund policy is much lower than that. So we're in a very strong position, and that 30% that we're looking to exceed still does not include potential large building permits. Last night, the village board annual PUD for Optima, assuming that moves forward, that is a very large six-figure permit. And we've also previously approved a project for Loyola and their auditorium that's anticipated to move forward next year. So neither one of those are included in our revenue estimates for '21, but will certainly help us as we move forward should they come to fruition. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Eric. He's going to walk us through, basically, this is our, an abbreviated monthly COVID-19 financial update, since we didn't do that last night at our board meeting as we typically do. And then Eric and Melinda will move through the proposed budget.
Thank you, Mike. So just to provide a broad overview of the COVID-19 pandemic, overall, we're, the village is expecting to see about an $800,000 impact on our general fund in 2020. We are projecting to see about one, one and a half million dollars in revenue shortfalls, but at the same time, the village has done a very good job of helping to reduce expenditures throughout the year, whether it was paring back of some programs, looking for other cost-saving opportunities that we've been able to develop around $700,000 in projected expense savings for 2020. So what has been our response over this time? We've, we've financed, we've provided financial models that help to provide updates on our projections for our revenues and our expenditures and provided that to the board on a monthly basis. But ultimately, our goal here has been to maintain service levels to our residents, especially during a pandemic when service demands do tend to increase. So we look, looking forward into the future on our, the, our response, we see a potential resurgence of the virus as we've seen additional restrictions put in place this past week. We are unsure of the long-term impact on the local economy as well as the national and state economy. But again, we are trying to minimize the impact to our community and develop strong contingency plans that allow us the flexibility to deal with future issues associated with the pandemic. So this is a very familiar chart where we look at the revenue outcomes across the several months that we've been doing models. Each month since the month of June has progressively gotten better. We have seen better expected receipts in home rule sales tax, in sales tax, and especially in the real estate transfer tax space. We have started to see, while our revenues certainly have not met our budget expectations, we have seen progress improvements over time. Back in June, we were talking about having reserve levels that dipped below the 30% mark. At this point in time, we have brought those revenue projections in both scenarios back up to around $32.5 million. And then going over to the expenditure side, these are the areas.
Let me, let me interrupt for one second. Just my recollection also is that the sort of final months of the year, it was still a very conservative view on many of the revenue line items. So, you know, if the question is, is, is a second resurgence going to have a material impact on the numbers, you know, how would, how would you answer that, given sort of how you guys have projected the revenue going forward here?
Yeah, as an example of, your statement is correct in that we have still continued the line on conservative estimates. One example is looking at home rule sales tax. We are still projecting anywhere from 25% to 30% declines in that revenue source over the last three months of the year. At no point during the pandemic have we seen home rule sales tax receipts come in less than a 15% to 20% range, even during the full shutdown. So we are still taking a very conservative approach, and that's just one example. That also stretches across to our building permits, to real estate transfer tax, and some of those other financially sensitive revenues. So we still feel that this number in both is a very conservative estimate of where we're going to end 2020.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you.
So then, looking at the expense side, we have done a very good job in holding the line. We've had personnel expenditure savings due to holding positions open. We've had savings in operating expenditures. There's been deferrals of several purchases and projects, including the comp plan that was mentioned earlier, but also some capital equipment replacements such as the AV equipment in the council chambers, as well as the sidewalk snowplow. During the same time, we've also incurred additional costs. There has been about $530,000 grants that were approved to support our local businesses. At this point in time, we've spent just north of $275,000. At this point, if, if there were no grant funds that were authorized during the remainder of this year, that remaining amount of around $250,000 would be additional savings in 2020. So that concludes kind of the overview that we have on the COVID impact. But, so this would be moving us into the general fund discussion. So just wanted to take the opportunity if there's any other questions on the COVID impact.
Any questions from the trustees?
All right. So moving into the general fund, the way, slightly different presentation in how we were looking at the information included in the general fund. Here shows the overall general fund expense and revenues in 2021. But what we've done is carved out two components. So the infrastructure investment fund is a new naming convention for what has historically been the engineering dedicated program. We thought it was a little bit more appropriate towards the type of work that was associated with it. It includes roadwork like central, our annual road program, bike improvements, any of the things that we will be highlighting a little bit later in the presentation that really goes towards the investment that we're making in our village's general infrastructure. So what this is indicating is the monies that are dedicated towards that program. The same thing is going on with the SURF program, where we are dedicating a certain amount of expenditures and revenues to that program on an annual basis. And what you're left with at the bottom for that unrestricted general fund is really looking at what revenues and expenses are available to fund the general operations of the village, from our police and fire services to our public work services. And so with that, I was going to turn the next portion of the presentation over to Melinda to go through a general fund revenue discussion.
So before I talk about this slide, I just also wanted to acknowledge in the, the naming convention change that Eric just talked about with the, the infrastructure, it was also to let Dan Manis know that those weren't all of just his funds anymore to spend. So Dan, just so you know, just don't take it too harshly. You're doing a great job. So on the, on this particular slide, though, what, what we are hoping that you can take away from this is the visual. And I think all of you already understand and know, property tax is the largest revenue source in the general fund, and it's also our most stable revenue source. This year, you know, with the pandemic, the change that occurred in allowing not a change in when the due date was for the second installment of the bill, but when the penalty date went into effect, that was moved out. We did see a slight change in our receipts, but it didn't do anything in terms of the total amount of revenue that we received. I think in the next couple of slides, we're, we're going to go into more detail on some of these other ones. We've kind of touched on them already a little bit in Eric's discussion about what has happened to some of these revenue sources with COVID. As Bob had just raised, do we see a possibility for some additional changes happening to some of our assumptions based on information that we're receiving? Because it's constantly changing, and we do. And I'll talk about those a little bit more as we go on. So if Eric wouldn't mind going to the next slide.
Well, Melinda, before you move on, I just want to let you know that I did laugh at your joke. I was on mute, but I did laugh at your joke about Dan Manis, okay?
And I can't see Dan, so I'm hoping that he was as well and not shaking his fist at me. So the proposed property tax levy, as we have discussed with each of you, and I think it's one of the things that almost everyone has really honed in on, is that our proposed increase for 2021 is just shy of a 4% increase. One of the questions that we were asked about is, in looking at this breakout that's in front of you, why is the debt service portion actually decreasing? And that's simply a function of, as, as most of you will probably understand, when we issue debt, it is never an exact linear, or we try to do as close as we can to keeping everything even and equal, but it's not always going to be the case. So there is a $5,000 reduction between what is in the levy for the 2020 budget versus 2021. So that's why there's a slight decrease that is showing there. But I think folks are also looking at the increase for the public safety pension. And as Mike has alluded to earlier, that is in part driven by our desire to continue to move forward with the 15-year rolling amortization. When we had agreed to move forward with that plan, we had talked about phasing it in over time. And in that phasing, we are trying not to put all of the onus on the property tax levy, which is why we have dedicated some portions of our general fund reserve to also help us meet that need. And then you'll see that general operations is increasing just a little over 2%. We project the overall impact to the average property tax bill will be $75. So the total levy is $20,326,000 is our proposed levy for the 2021 budget.
And Melinda, just as a point of clarification, frankly, I think the trustees know this, but for anybody else who may watch this in the future, road spending is not going down in the 2020 versus 2021 budget. That increase is now, the increase in the 2020 budget is now a permanent part of the property tax base. It's just not going up incrementally in 2021. That's what the 0% reflects. It's not a decrease from 2.7 to 0. It's just maintaining at the level that we increased it last year, right?
You are correct, Bob. So that 2.69% increase in the 2020 budget was to allocate an additional half a million dollars to the road program. We already had 150,000 of the property tax levy dedicated to the road improvement. We added a half a million last year, so we're up to 650,000. So that is the, the component in the tax levy. So to Bob's point and to what I was trying to explain with the debt service levy, there's just not any incremental shift that's occurring. So if there's no other questions, then as Eric moves to the next slide. So you're going to, as when Eric even flips to the next one, he's not going to do it right now, you're going to see the same dollar bill. And, and we've added to it this year. So Eric has cast these lovely colors to help us even focus on things a little further. But the biggest takeaway from this is whether you are in school district 39 or school district 37, the village portion for every dollar spent on the property tax levy is 12 cents. So if, Eric, if you wouldn't mind scrolling. So it looks like the same dollar bill, but you're going to see that the difference between the two is one was school district 39, which had the 38 cents, and now, yep, as he's going back and forth, one more time. So district 37 is 35 cents. Are there any questions on these slides?
You know, I would prefer if our color, if we were in the green instead of in the red. It is a budget document, and you never like to be in the red. So that was just, that's my suggestion on this chart.
Duly noted.
I was going to say for next year, that's.
Trying to keep it a little bit light here, you know.
I agree.
All right. So as Eric goes to our next slide, so Mike had, had talked about this earlier when he had mentioned the structural deficit that the village has. And part of what is causing that is what you see in this chart in front of you. And we actually started this discussion back in 2019 because we could see that this was maybe happening. So hopefully this isn't a shock to anyone. But what you take away from this slide is that you see that there was growth happening after the Great Recession in our, what we call our recurring revenues. And that's really, you can take out the property taxes, our grants, and all of the, the non-recurring permit revenue. So it's kind of focused on, on what we call sort of our core revenues beyond the property tax levy. And you're just going to see what's happened. We had growth happening up until 2018, and we were already starting to see the declines. We know that some of what's happening in our 2020 estimate is related to COVID, but you can even see in our 2020 budget estimate, we were recognizing that there's a decline that's happening. So this kind of helps inform our thinking going forward that, as Mike was saying, we need to, to look at these and sort of understand what are the drivers behind it, which we're going to talk about a little bit more. And that will help us understand what, if anything, we can do to help reverse the declines, or is it going to cause us to take some other steps going forward? So if Eric. So if Eric wouldn't mind going to our next slide, so the first one we're going to talk about is sales tax. And really, just so you know, the next six slides are going to look at individual revenue sources. So really, one of our largest ones is is sales tax. And it's combined of what we call the regular sales tax, our local use tax, which I think everyone now has come to understand is really driven by internet sales. And then the cannabis tax, which is new to the state this year. And even though we don't have a dispensary, the way that those monies are allocated, we actually do get a portion of what the state is collecting. So with the sales tax, I think one of our takeaways when we look at this sales tax in comparison to the home rule sales tax is if you look at what is happening, it's you can see some growth that's occurring. There is a slight decline. But especially when you look at what we had estimated for 2020 and our 2021 proposed, is you're not seeing maybe what you would have expected to see is a larger decline, given what's happening with COVID. And the reason behind that is our largest driver with sales tax, especially when you look at it here. Not only is it what has occurred with the local use tax, because you can see that that is growing over time and that has helped support us. But the other part is grocery sales. And that really is going to come into play when you look at the home rule sales tax. But if you can remember in your mind, and we've talked about this before, that's why we didn't see as much of a decline in our sales tax revenue as some of our neighbors. Because really, the one of the largest drivers for us is our is grocery stores. But the other thing to think about when we look at sales tax is the change that is occurring because of what is called the Level the Plane the Field Act. And what that really means is the state has taken two, what I'm going to say are two different steps, but related in addressing how to collect sales tax on internet purchases. The first change occurred this year in 2020. And what it really was is a compliance sort of change in the law. So it was trying to capture more of what was occurring with it, but the reporting of the sales tax and putting in place rules and regulations to make sure that there was compliance. What's happening now in 2021 is there is going to be a shift in what sales tax is applied to those internet purchases. So where in the past, all of that was collected by the state under the local use tax and then distributed to municipalities on a per capita basis. Starting in 2021, those sales will not be subject to the local use tax. Instead, they will be subject to the regular sales tax as well as home rule sales tax. And it will be driven by where the delivery of those items are made. So as our residents make internet purchases, those sales taxes that are associated will actually be allocated directly to the village. So that is different. So what we are expecting that's going to happen is that there's going to be a decline in local use tax and there's going to be an increase in the regular sales tax. The problem around us trying to put together solid numbers for 2021 is there is no data right now for us to look at that will help us understand what internet purchases are being made by our residents here.
But if you if you take two, two, two reasons to expect that might be higher, one is given sort of the affluence of the community, one can assume that our residents buy more things and that it would translate also to buy more things online. And two, the way the use tax is collected. So a question first, Melinda, the the tax that's remitted to Amazon, for example, that goes to the state, is that, does that now come back as use tax today?
Yes.
Okay. And then, but it will change and it will come back to us instead as sales tax.
You are correct.
Right, okay. But so, so, so Amazon collects a bunch of it and and remits it to Amazon and other retailers. There's also use tax that we report on our tax returns to the extent it hasn't been collected. And presumably, people try and do their best, but it's probably underreported. So if there's more actual collections occurring via the internet retailers and it's being distributed to actually the communities where the purchases are made, you can make an argument, we don't know how much, but you can make an argument that we should see some positive impact in this sales tax number. I understand we're not projecting it, but but there is some reason for hope there. Would you agree with that?
Absolutely. And there's a chart that we have a slide later on in the presentation where we kind of, I don't want to say rank some of these different revenue sources, but we try to give an idea as to where we think there could be both pros and cons. And what you just articulated, Bob, is exactly how we view this right now. This is one where that, for for the reasons that you just said, there is this potential, an upside potential that is here in terms of what could happen with the revenues.
When? We'll have to wait and see, right?
You are correct.
Okay.
So I have a question on that?
Yes.
So you talked about how the the local use tax will decline. Will it, will it be eliminated altogether? Or will there be a time when there's a local use tax and the sales tax from internet sales?
So the local use tax doesn't go away. But the amount of goods that it will actually apply to will be very small. And I think if you even go back and you look at, if you look on this chart and you look at 2010, the amount of local use tax that we had at that point in time, whatever purchases those were applying to, that's really probably where the local use tax is going to go to. It will diminish in terms of its size because what will be subject to it is going to shrink dramatically.
Okay. And when will we start learning these numbers? I mean, when when is the money remitted to us from the state? Or when do we find out, you know, what our our new local sales tax is going to be from internet sales?
So we're not going to start seeing some of this really until about April. But we're not going to have solid numbers. So it really, it's going to be as the year goes on that we're going to get a better sense as to what is occurring. So I would say at the time that we have our midyear financial, we'll probably have a couple of months underneath our belt to start understanding what this is. But we're, we definitely aren't going to have any data before April. And that's just going to be the start of it. And that would just be for one month of transactions that occur.
For January?
Yes.
Okay.
And Melinda, so we don't
If the state is ready and has has the ability to to send that information out to us, that's the, that's the other part of it, Senta. I, you know, the way that we are able to access that information right now, there's that much of a lag. I don't know if that lag is going to grow just because of 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 building the infrastructure for them to be able to remit the information back to us, that that I'm not sure about.
We won't get, we won't get holiday, we won't get holiday sales. Sorry, sorry, Kathy, I'll go to next. We won't get holiday sales. This is effective Jan 1, right?
You are correct, Bob.
Okay. Kathy, sorry about that. Go ahead.
That's okay. I just, I had two questions, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. So the first question I have is on the sales tax where you're talking about the online sales. Will we, will we receive that so that we'll see it split out between what is online versus, you know, happening within our community? Will we see, will we get two different numbers or however? And maybe you'll get it. Will you be able to share that with us?
Okay. Get it. So Kathy, the the first piece is, I can't answer that yet because we we haven't received it yet, so I I'm not sure. And then the next part of it is, I would suspect that there will be, I'm hoping some way for us to be able to designate in a very macro sense what of the sales tax that we're receiving are are tied to those types of sales versus what's happening with our brick and mortar stores. I I'm going to guess that there will be some way for us to differentiate that. But again, since we haven't seen anything on this at all, I I can only tell you, it would be my expectation that we would be able to.
Okay, okay. And then my second question is just, are you surprised that, you know, the composition of the sales tax, obviously? Are you surprised by what we're receiving regarding the cannabis tax? I mean, just given, I just don't know enough. Is that based on just, how is, how are we receiving a portion of that? Can you refresh my memory on that?
Sure. How about if I, I'm going to tell you this piece of it. Well, there's two comments I have to it. Number one is if you think about some of the articles that are in the paper in terms of the amount of cannabis sales that are happening in the state, they are even larger than I think what was the original estimate. That's occurring. The second piece is when the legislation was put in place, the state, in their waterfall of how these revenues work, allocated a certain amount of money to go to all municipalities for law enforcement purposes. And that is why we are receiving the small amount of cannabis tax that we are right now. The purpose behind that is it's to to be used for law enforcement purposes.
And so we're receiving a small amount because our law enforcement is smaller relative to other communities?
I'm going to tell you where it's, I don't know that it's necessarily based on our, our, the size of our police department. I think it's being allocated in a similar rate on a per capita basis. So it's the size of Willmet compared to other communities in the state.
Got it. So it's, okay. I'm just surprised.
What are the dollars, what are the dollars that we're talking about, Melinda?
So last month, I think we received 1,000, like about 1,900 is what we received last month. And and over, over these past couple of months, it's it's grown over the past several months. But it's sort of tracked the articles that we've been reading in the paper that cannabis sales are are more robust than what they had initially anticipated.
But it's like $20,000 a year then, is what you're saying?
Yes.
$20,000 a year, which is what we'll receive.
Yes. And and again, when we put the budget together, we had no expectation that that was going to occur. So that was a new tax revenue to us in 2020. And I know Eric is probably working on trying to get the slides back up. And as he's working on that, I I'll just
They're up on mine. I don't know about. Peter Skiles, what are we seeing on the internet and on the cable? Are we seeing the slides still?
I don't have the live stream up at the moment. Alex, do you have it up?
Yep, the slides are still up.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm I'm just seeing Eric's, I see Mike is raising his hand.
That was an accident. I was trying to find them too. I can't find the slides either.
Okay. All right. So you and I aren't seeing them yet. If if everyone else is
It should be up there now.
Yeah, they're back up now, I think.
Yep, I got them again.
Okay, I I don't, but I know I think what the slides are supposed to say. So if you guys have home rule sales tax, I'll just keep talking about it. In hope that my internet catches up with everyone else. So on the home rule sales tax slide, I I think if, now I can see it, all right. So if you can recall the sales tax slide, and I said, really, when we get to home rule sales tax, you'll start to understand how the grocery stores are really helping and and those purchases are helping to support overall sales tax because they are not part or subject to the home rule sales tax. So really here is where you see the impact of the rest of the businesses and sort of what has happened. So this is why you see more of a decline, at least more of a dramatic one than you did on the sales tax. It's really because of that difference. And in terms of what we are projecting, Eric has already talked to you about the estimate that we had put together and that this is one that we do have some thought that there could be a slight upside to it. Another piece that could be an upside to it is that change in the state law that I just was discussing is that those same purchases that are now no longer going to be subject to the use tax, but regular sales tax, they are also supposed to be subject to the home rule sales tax. So that could be something that might help us out with this particular revenue source in 2021 as well.
Wait, so let me, I I that, I'm not sure I knew that. So when, starting Jan 1, when, and I think you said it in the prior slide, but I just didn't process it. Starting Jan 1, when the state starts allocating those, the the taxes collected on internet purchases, not only will the state sales tax of whatever six and a quarter be applied, but the local taxes as well. So Cook County is going to see a pickup here too. Their their sort of local tax as well as us and the RTA and everybody else.
Right. That's the whole idea. And that's why the the act is called leveling the playing field. They are trying to make it the same whether you walk into a brick and mortar store or whether you purchased it online. So our brick and mortar stores are subject to the home rule sales tax. Those other purchases are supposed to be subject to it as well.
Got it. So so actually, what it means is the tax collected by Amazon is going up. The amount is going up. Instead of just collecting the state use tax, they're going to, they're going to be collecting the full sales tax.
You are correct. That is the intent behind that law.
If I can add, the the information we've received from the state in the Illinois Municipal League has been incredibly convoluted on this and it's sometimes contradictory. So while that's the intent of the law, we're going to need to wait and see that proved out to see that that actually happens because it's just not been very clear in the communications we've received.
Which is why we've said there is that that helps give us a potential for an upside. So given, given one of the understandings of the law, that that could be something that helps out this revenue source.
Got it. Kathy, you wanted to say something?
So I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you all are saying. So if you, if you're making, so Amazon's going to have to know the each of these communities' home rule sales tax when they're, they're going to have to be. So in addition to calculating the Illinois sales tax, they're going to have to know the county sales tax and the individual, individual community sales tax.
You are correct, yes.
Yeah. And Kathy, from my experience working in retail, there are companies that that's all they do is they keep track of all of this stuff and they sell their services to, you know, like Kroger, you know, who's got them all over the place.
Got it. Okay, okay. I just want to make sure I was more understanding. Okay. I didn't actually realize that either.
Yeah, I didn't realize, I didn't realize it either, that we were going to get the home rule sales tax on internet purchases. That's even better than just an allocation of the use tax.
Yep, for sure. Yep.
Yeah, well, it doesn't sound entirely enforceable. It's pretty hard to to see how they're going to be able to enforce this against out of state retailers, but we'll see.
And then I think it goes back to the the question that Senta was bringing up. I think it's going to take us a while for us to see the data and really start to see exactly how this is all going to unfold. I'm just trying to give you some sense as to how we think it might impact things right now. But but that could be a potential upside for our home rule sales tax.
Yeah.
We we did not budget for it in 2021.
Good.
All right. So Eric is, I know is going to move to the next slide. In in this particular space, especially over these past couple of months, I I think you know and you're sensitive to the fact that this is, has been a revenue source that has performed exceptionally well for us. It really started at the end of July, continued through August, September. I can tell you, it is definitely still occurring in the month of October, if you talk to my staff. The amount of real estate transfer stamps that are being purchased is is robust, to say the least. And it's not just indicative of what we see in Willmet. It's happening across the North Shore, and I think it's happening in other communities as well. Driving this is, you know, there is theories that it is people moving away from the city and wanting to come back out to the suburbs again. And I think the other thing that is helping us here is mortgage rates. They are exceptionally low right now, which is allowing additional folks who maybe in the past were sitting on the fence, it's allowing them to to make that purchase as well. So real estate transfer tax as a revenue source. We have been conservative in our projection, although to answer a question that we had at one point in time, we are seeing that the average price is increasing and we're taking that into consideration in our estimate. We brought down the number of transactions from where we see it this year, just again, to be conservative because a lot of things. This is a revenue source that started the year strong. January and February were very strong months for us, and then it just evaporated during the rest of the second quarter. Really, like I said, did not pick up until the end of July. So this is a revenue source that can turn on a dime on us. So I think we've been very conservative in what we have projected in 2021. But this is again, a revenue source that has the potential for an upside for us going But this is again, a revenue source that has the potential for an upside for us going forward. And even in 2020. So, so as I said to you, October has still been an extremely robust month for us. We'll wait to see if this continues into November and December. So as we move on to the next slide, building permits is not as, as great of a story as the real estate transfer tax one. So really, in the past, when we've talked about building permits, what you know has always been what we focused on is the, the non-recurring because that is really, it has contributed substantially to our overall financial health that, that we have right now. But even as we saw that happening, and as this chart is showing you, we knew that the non-recurring activity though had been declining over time. So you can see there's a lot of variability here, but it's definitely been stepping down since 2018. Again, this is a revenue source that, that sort of started drying up during the second quarter. We have seen a resurgence in activity in August and September. I think we've taken a very conservative stance on this going into 2021. But Mike has already talked to you about, we are not budgeting for some potential non-recurring revenue that can occur. So that's really where the upside on this particular revenue source comes from. We're not necessarily seeing it being driven by regular permanent activity. It really will be in the non-recurring if, if and when some of these other development projects move forward. So income tax, which I think most of you know, a lot of times is referred to as the local distributive fund. And the reason behind that is this is a revenue source collected by the state and they allocate it on a per capita basis. It is a revenue source that surprised us in 2019. And I think we've talked about that before, that it actually had to do with some tax law changes as well as the impact of, of how the market had performed in the previous year. But it is one that we actually, we look towards the IML, the Illinois Municipal League, and the research that they do to help guide us in terms of how we project this revenue source. So it's, it's definitely an economically sensitive revenue source. There is potential upside to this. In fact, Bob, when you were asking Eric earlier when he was discussing COVID and some of the things that, that we're seeing and, and do we see any revenue sources that have the potential for an upside? Literally yesterday evening, we got an update that the IML did for their November monthly report. And the income tax, they have now actually increased their estimate, not only for the current calendar year, but for 2021. So we already know this is a revenue source that has a potential upside. It makes sense to me, the adjustment that they've done for 2020, because as we were seeing the revenue coming in, I, I knew that we were going to be above. Either we were going to be above in 2020 or the next two months, we're going to just totally fall off the charts, which we knew that that should not occur. So they have adjusted up our year-end estimate. So I expect we're going to perform better with this revenue this year, and they have now increased their projection for 2021.
Hey, Melinda, Peter Garrow here. A question for you. Are the IML numbers statewide or is any component of them specific to Willmet? In particular, a focus on our unemployment rate?
So, great question, and it's all state-driven. So no, it, it does not have to do with the villages' unemployment. It is a statewide issue, and that's why it's allocated out on, so the state collects all of it and then allocates it out per capita. Another piece that actually might benefit us with this particular revenue source, and I'm glad you brought that question up, Peter, is that when we get the results of the census, depending on what happens with that, there could be a benefit to the village depending on the, the overall state census. So it was great that we had the response that we did, and, and hopefully that is going to result in an increase in our share of some of these revenue sources.
So then, if I'm understanding then, then looking at the IML numbers is a very conservative approach as it might affect Willmet, that in fact, we might do better or perhaps even considerably better than.
Well, it's not, but it's not allocated based on the income taxes that our residents pay. It's tapping up, so we don't get the benefit of that. But if, I guess it's, it's a lot like the property tax. If our percentage of the population of the state goes up, then we'll get a larger allocation from the state total, total dollars.
Yes. Correct.
Oh, all right. Well, I thought it would be, I thought the story was better than that. Okay.
Well, one thing I'd like to just point out too is depending on the outcome of the fair tax amendment, the local government distributive fund is something we're going to need to keep our eye on. The state, multiple times in the past decade, has deferred municipal revenues or attempted to capture municipal revenues from this fund to prop up their own financial issues. And it very well could become a possibility again over the next several years. So we'll monitor that closely. I've recently talked to our state senator on that, and I, I don't think it's something that is off the table from the governor's perspective if that amendment fails to pass.
Well, two other, two other questions around that, Mike and Melinda. If, if the, if the fair tax passes and the, I don't know if the legislation has been passed and signed as only subject to the fair tax, or if the legislation sort of follows the fair tax amendment, but, but the proposal with the increases and the decrease, what does that do? Is, is the local government distributive fund getting a piece of that? Or is that incremental all going to the state? Do we know the answer to that?
So, so Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to give the part that I've sort of looked into, and then, and then you can chime in with any sort of additional stuff. So Bob, I tried to do that research to see if, so if you look here where it's talking about the state share of the revenue to municipalities, if you look at those percentages, and this is a conversation even Eric and I have been having about this as well. They are not coming out with any estimates on what those percentages will be. What I can tell you is as the state has had its own fiscal problems to deal with, that percentage of what we've received of the local distributive fund has actually declined. So even when they raised the income tax, what they did is they reduced the municipal share, and they said they were holding us harmless because what they wanted to do is take that increment and use it all for the state. I'm just surmising that if the, the fair tax were to pass, that what it could mean for us is less of an issue of them continuing to take more money away from us and actually keep us held harmless. There has been no discussion in any of the writings that I can find where they, as Bob is smiling, where they are saying that they are going to give more money to municipalities from that. So no, I, I don't expect that's going to happen.
If, if, you know, yeah, and that's why I asked the question because I know in past tax increases, we haven't gotten incremental dollars. We haven't, we may be at less risk of having them taken away because there's more dollars to start with, but we haven't gotten incremental dollars. So the other, the other question is with the IML's new projection, what is that? So the, the two four, the $2.49 million, that's the old projection. What is the new projection equate to in terms of incremental?
I think Eric was already doing the calculation on that. And Eric, if you want to chime in, it was no, I know it was over $200,000.
Yeah, it was just at around 200, just over $200,000 is the spread amount.
So arguably, that would cover, arguably that could cover our $130,000 structural deficit this year.
That is one of these things on the upside. Yes, that is a potential upside. It's just another, another variable for us to watch, but that's one that could have a positive impact for us. Yes.
Good. Okay.
So we're not going to spend a lot of time on this slide, and the reason is that it was utility taxes, the big story here, and it's a big negative story, is what continues to happen with the telecommunications tax. I think if, if you look at this chart here, you see that it continues to shrink over time. This is because people are abandoning their landlines. The thought is at some point in time, this is going to sort of level itself out. I don't know when we're ever going to get to that point. We've made an assumption. We took the 2021 proposed and we left it at where we're at for the 2020 estimate. But this is one that has, has the potential for a negative downside as, as that could decline over time.
Melinda, I just have a question going back to President Balinski's question on the income tax. Sure. Sorry. I just, are, so are you going to, are, are we going to increase our 2021 proposed income tax amount from 2.49 up to 2.69 or whatever we believe it's going to be?
I, I'm not suggesting that we are at this time because it's, right? When we put the budget together, we're doing it at a particular point in time with the best information that we have. We're just, that's one right now that their estimate for 2020 is, is they've just now increased it. But Kathy, it continues to change over time. So it's one where I see a potential upside. But if the fair tax doesn't pass, then I'm going to tell you I see a, a big negative that's out there because the state still has their issues to, to handle. And the local distributive fund is definitely a revenue source that they don't have problems with tapping into. So that could be a huge negative for us as well.
And I understand that, I guess what I was asking is we, obviously at some point, you'll bring an updated budget to us in our, in one of our village board meetings. And by then, we should know if the fair tax is going to be, if it's going to pass. We should have a better sense from, a better sense from IML. And so my question is more at that point in time, would we make an update?
You know, we can discuss it and we could, or Kathy, we could wait until we start the next calendar year. And again, if things still look the way they are, it's just a revenue source that we're going to see is going to perform better because the other revenue sources still have the ability to either perform higher or lower. We're always going to be at a projection. Do you know what I mean? Everything that we do is sort of an, an estimate that we have at a given point in time.
And to some extent this year, because we're hitting the reserves a little bit, it's not changing the, the, the tax rate for people. Because we're sort of all, the question is how much are you going to hit the reserve? As opposed to, well, if we had $200,000 here or more, it would take the property tax down 200,000. We're already sort of in a, in a deficit this year because of, of the conservative budgeting and the COVID. So it's, it's not, I mean, obviously in the aggregate, it's very relevant, the big dollars, but on the, on the edges, it's not as relevant as it might be in a, in a normal year. I think that's another way to look at it.
And, and here's, okay, so, and, and this, this is just plain devil's advocate, Kathy. So today we saw what happened with the stock market, right? We had a huge decline, a one-day decline in the stock market. What happens with that and whether or not individuals are going to have to pay? Because that's one of the components with the income tax is, is capital gains and what happens with that. So again, if, depending on what happens with the market by the end of this year, that is going to have a, a large impact on what happens with the income tax revenue as well. There's a lot of different components that, that go into it. So I'll just throw that out there is, is again, we're, we're putting together. I, I agree with you that we did it based on the IML. We just found out that they're increasing their estimate for 2021. Although we see items that could, are, are the potential upside with this revenue source, there are items out there that are also negatives for this revenue source as well going forward.
But how about I suggest, why don't you keep us, keep us posted on, on updates to this number?
We'll do.
Well, we should, we should know by this time next week, what, whether the fair tax amendment passes, what the legislature does in the, in the aftermath of its passage or non-passage is, is uncertain. But we'll know whether it passes by Wednesday next week.
Right.
Yeah, so.
So just sort of big picture reviewing the revenue, and really the discussion that we were having right now, it is, is playing into this kind of review of things. We are continuously monitoring these different revenue sources, looking out there for any sort of kind of information or gauge to help us understand what's happening with the revenue now and what could be happening with it going forward. And we're always doing this in, in terms of how we're looking at things, looking at what the impact can be for the taxpayer, not only in 2021, but also in the years beyond as we're looking at, is the structural deficit, is it going to continue to grow? Or are we going to be able to resolve it in sort of a, a different way just because of natural growth that might happen with some of these revenue sources? So I think Eric now is going to start looking at the expenditures.
Right, so switching over to the expenditure side of the general fund, our overall budget is just at around $35.5 million. As we discussed before, we have certain parts of the general fund that are allocated to specific programs. The infrastructure investment being one, SURF being another, leaving around $31.6 million for our overall general operations. So if we're looking at a year-over-year comparison between 20 and 21, we're seeing just around a 2.5% increase in our general fund operations. That includes personnel expenses, refuse collection, our contractual service, services, and some of our other broad categories that we have in the general fund. So looking more specifically at some of our general fund expenditures, we do have some major budget increases across four main categories. The first one is an increase in our technology investment. We're seeing an increase in our licensing costs for our computer software, an investment in our phone system, internet, as well as security for the village's network. All of these technology improvements are meant to improve both the, the workers, our employees' capacity to, to provide service, and then also improve the overall experience for our customers. Looking at public safety, we are having some increases in our dispatch services associated with Red Center, as well as radio replacements and reaccreditation costs in our fire department. Refuse collection is seeing around a 2.5% increase per the terms of our refuse contract. And then we see some small increases in our other contracted services that, that range from our communications retainer to increases in our custodial contract, as well as traffic, traffic signal maintenance for our signals throughout the community. But the chart here really provides a breakdown of what, what departments we are funding through the general fund. And as you can see, the primary expenditures are really associated with our public works and our public safety groups. Really those frontline services being provided to our residents. So looking through in our, for our 2021 expense revenues, what we've done, as we presented before, we've really broken our expenses into several different tiers. As we've talked about before, we understand that there are risks associated with our different revenues, from income tax to sales tax. And if these revenue projections aren't met, we have the ability to pull these different tier levers to manage our expenditures. The first tier really consists of internal control measures such as training or holding positions open. The second tier consists of a review of our capital investment, including SURF purchases. The third tier consists of reviewing our contracted programs and services. And the final tier really looks at reviewing service levels and potential staffing levels. So what we've done here is provided an itemized view of potential options in the first three tier categories. The first tier goes through those operational expenses that we had just discussed, which is holding open vacancies, reducing training costs, as well as some other purchases of operational supplies and just general operations cost. When we look into the second.
How did, how did you, how did we come up with $100,000 for open vacancies?
So we looked at an overall historical vacancy factor that we've really looked at throughout village staff. We've, we've generally saved around 1% to 2% on an annual basis, just based upon turnover and hiring lag. So we felt that if we were able to continue to hold those positions open, potentially for a longer period of time than where they're currently being held, that we have that capacity to, to save additional dollars. So as an example, we currently have a vacant police officer position. With that, there is a certain period of time that it takes for a new recruit to go through the recruitment process, to go through that training period before they get brought on as an officer. So there is just that natural lag that exists with positions that allow us to save dollars.
How many, how many open positions do we have today? Do we know? How many? How many open positions do we have today? Do we know?
I I can jump in real quick. In the general fund, we have two full time positions vacant and a couple of part time positions. So Eric had mentioned the police. We've intentionally held open a public works streets maintenance worker since the start of the pandemic. And we've worked with Bridget and Guy to study our staffing for this winter season. And we're comfortable continuing to hold that position open through the winter based on our staffing models. So that's a position that we're going to hold open for the time being and continue to evaluate. And if we get to a point that our services are being impacted or the crews aren't able to perform as desired, then then we go ahead and fill it. So that that's also part of the reason we get to that 100,000 is we we know already. We're going into the year with the vacancy that we're not committed to filling just yet. And it's also likely, you know, as Eric talked about, we generally save more than 100,000 a year on the personnel side anyway annually. Usually it's more than 300 or 400,000. So this is a pretty conservative number to plug in in that first year.
And do we know? I mean, are those were those open positions because of retirement termination? How do how do those positions become open? Going is do you have an idea? Possible open positions going into 21? Do we know? Do you know of any staff for positions that might be saying we're going to retire close to that?
We do. We we work with the staff regularly in terms of tracking, you know, who's looking at retiring as we work with them and help them understand their position in their career. And when they're ready to leave. So we know there's a couple of vacancies coming early in 21. You know, at least three that I can think of off the top of my head. Those positions are pretty critical to what we do, two of them being in our vehicle maintenance division and public work. So those are ones we're going to need to fill. Right away. We can't be short in the mechanics division in winter when they need to get get in and repair those snow piles. So. Yeah, we we do kind of look at those and forecast those moving forward. So we have a pretty good feel, at least for the first half of the year, how that's going to shake out.
I have a question if I could. I'm wondering if you could sort of describe how we would engage these tiers in the coming year if if needed. What would be our process?
So sure, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so similar to what we did when we when we first started going through the pandemic. We brought the issue forward before the board and then provided different opportunities. To engage on on the different cost saving measures in 2020. So I think that we would have a very similar approach that we know we're going to have monthly communications with the board on the financial status that we're going to know. If revenues are performing, if they're exceeding or they're not exceeding our our budget numbers for 2021. And if we start to see revenues. Declining or underperforming, we would bring forward to the board opportunities to have the discussion on these different tiers. And when we would pull each one of these levers, these are really a. A high level overview of options that we have available. None of them would be set before we would bring them to the. Board before to have some final input on that decision.
And they're sequential, I I take it?
Yeah, I think we would start with a lot of the tier one level levers and we would move into tier two, but there might be some movement between them just based upon. Just based upon kind of the overall feel.
Yeah, I could see some. I could see some of those tier threes being moved ahead of some of our infrastructure, depending on our situation and our needs at the time. So. Tier one definitely is happening first and then tier two and three will kind of work together. And when we get to tier two, we know we're probably not in a great financial situation worse than we expected. So, you know, all options are going to be on the table at that point.
Can I follow up on Joel's question? Then you envision particular triggers, a decline of X percent. Which would cause you to have the the discussion before the board? How does? How does? What? 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 What would? What would begin that conversation with us?
Sure, I'll I'll take that one. I think the first trigger is going to be if we see revenues. Underperforming our overall general fund projection. So if we see that that general fund reserve draw being greater than 1.94 million, that's the first trigger we're going to look at. The next trigger is going to be that 30% goal we have in our reserve. And, you know, we would really like to maintain that as we have, you know, a significant amount of debt we plan to issue over the next couple of years. So that'll be another trigger we look at, but we're we'll be reviewing this with the board monthly. So we'll be having these discussions well ahead of any of those triggers. Ever even occurring. So this won't be a surprise to staff or the board. If we have to get to these discussions because we'll be monitoring that monthly and we'll see that trend happening before we need to make any decisions.
And so Peter, I think I think that that's there's there's a fluidity with the board and the staff on that. And so. That preserves a lot of discretion there and and Mike or Bridget, will it be sort of similar? You know, we didn't make the final calls on some of our infrastructure projects until like June. Is it going to be a comparable timeframe where say that first? I mean, obviously, you can decide to buy equipment whenever you decide to buy equipment. So that can wait. But the million dollars of infrastructure that 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 could be pulled, is that sort of on the same time schedule like a June decision point?
Yeah, the intent would be to mirror it, just like we did this year. So two different decision points, which gives us additional flexibility to better understand our financial condition.
Right. So there's a lot of time that'll pass before some of those bigger ticket items up there get executed upon.
And that million dollars on infrastructure, you know, that that's not cutting any of those programs really completely, you know, that that's removing an alley or removing a block or two of road resurfacing. So, you know, you still get the bulk of your infrastructure work done, but it scales it back similar to the levels we scaled it back this year in some regard.
Can I? Can I? That's all I sent it. Because I guess I'm looking at this as sort of what we call in tiers or the priorities, but your first lever is going to be, you know, in in tier one and two and three. So are we going to say to certain streets, we're not gonna? We're not. We're not going to patch your road or or do the traffic calming. First, but then we're going to pay to do the hanging baskets in period tier three. I think I think our priorities might be a little out of whack there. I think, you know, I would I would challenge and say. You know, tree planting and some of the hanging baskets, I think most I don't want to, you know, I would think most residents want their street repaired versus the hanging basket, but. I just were challenged that might a little bit of the out of whack there on the.
Yeah, that's a fair point. And, you know, we get stuck a little bit in, you know, tier three is contractual services. So something like hanging baskets or tree planting gets lumped into that category. But that's why I had mentioned earlier, those tiers are going to kind of cross reference one another as we make our decision and prioritize it. As the board will recall, this year we had scaled back tree planting very early on. We had scaled back streetscape furniture before we looked at any of the the infrastructure. So yeah, that's we would follow that same approach and certainly are cognizant of that. We do get a lot of positive feedback about our downtown hanging baskets, though. So we do want to make sure we keep that.
They're lovely.
We get a lot of complaints when the roads aren't doing very well.
Fair enough.
I have a question about the, you know, when we reviewed this year and we kind of we had another decision point. In July about the infrastructure investment, how does that work with? Because I understand you do a lot of your bidding early to get the best bids. How does that? If we delay some of our decision points, do we still get? Good good bids on those?
I'm going to defer this one to Bridget or Dan if one of them wants to jump in.
Yeah, I can jump in. Yeah, thanks for the question, trustee punkett. Our intention is to still bid all the programs early. To take advantage of the good pricing we can obtain early in the season. And then we would reserve the right to make reductions in the contract. That would allow us to make those decisions at a later date. So we don't feel like it's going to impact the pricing.
Okay, we're not penalized for that?
No, we would write it into the bid documents in the contract language that the village reserves the right to make reductions at a certain point. So we would lock in the unit pricing with an early bid.
Okay, and then just this is probably not for you, Dan, but back onto the tier one. You know, the 100,000 for holding open vacancies, we pretty much already have that. Is that correct? I mean, we wouldn't even have to activate that lever. Do we? Are we already pretty much sure that we'll at least have that much?
Well, I I'm not necessarily ready to commit that we we can hold that public works maintenance worker position open for the entirety of the year. We're comfortable doing it now, but we're going to continue to evaluate that. You know, there's certain circumstances that may change that and we let the board know. So I don't, I'm not banking on that, but I'm confident overall, just with, as Eric described, just general turnover. And our staff with salary savings and how long it takes to fill a position or whatnot that we'll we'll have savings.
Right. And we have to budget the expenditure in essence to make the expenditure. So if you do hire it. If you do, if you if you don't budget it, then you would have to actually reopen the budget or approve it separately as an incremental expenditure, right?
Correct.
Any more questions? These are good questions from everyone. Thank you.
I just want to go back to making sure I understand something just focused a little bit following up on maybe what Dan was requesting. So the tier two levers. You know, the 1 million dollars in the infrastructure, the 593, whatever, are those listed in the order? So if we had to start with tier two. One of the first things we would cut back would be roads and alleys or brick streets or traffic calming or bike that those would be. Looked at first before maybe surf replacements.
Those are listed in order of magnitude.
Okay.
Ease of reference, but no, we we would look. I would. I would go lower on tier two before we go to infrastructure.
Got it. Okay, okay. So these are all listed in terms of price, not priority.
Yeah, it's more of a category. Almost I think tier is making us think that it's priority as opposed to category, like. Category one, category two, category three, category four. Is probably more accurate because, Mike, as you said, two and three are going to be an interplay. And as Dan said, are you really going to put baskets up and not do? An alley or, you know, whatever.
Well, maybe that's where I'm confused. That's because this slide, but if you go back one slide, Eric, I think it was that slide that confused me where it was sort of again, a waterfall of. Top down. That's how that's what that's what sort of threw me going, okay, this is how we're going to approach it.
Yeah, those are fair points. We'll as we move forward in the process, we'll. We'll refine our our kind of language and approach a little bit, but I think the overall concept is we've got a lot of flexibility. On the expense side, if we need to pare back. Eric, if you flip to the next slide, we could have balanced this year's budget if we had cut all this out. We didn't think that was in the best interest of the community. We think these are services we should continue to provide and we can if we meet our projections. But we'll certainly, you know, we have the ability to scale back, you know, in any in any order we want to as we move forward.
And I just want to say, you know, to Mike and the team, I mean, I like the process we've been following to date where we're having our monthly reviews and we look at things. So. You know, I think if we continue that, then we as a board will have an opportunity to look at these various levers and weigh into. What we, you know, at the given point, what makes the most sense. So I just.
Yeah, Kathy, that's well, that's well stated. I agree completely.
So looking at the overall outcome, we're looking at in 2021 to have a reserve drawdown of just north of 1.9 million dollars. As we we've discussed, this is really primarily driven by the revenue impact due to COVID. But it also is including planned drawdowns for our comprehensive plan as well as that pension contribution through the 15 year rolling aridization. So we really want to invest in our community initiatives. And then the last part of that drawdown is really used to address the structural deficit that we'll discuss more as we move into 2021. So looking at the overall general fund reserves, we expect to end 2020 at a reserve level of around 36%. And as we use those reserve level drawdowns, we expect to end 2021 based upon the current budget proposed. At around a 31% reserve level, which is slightly above our 30 30% reserve target.
Yeah, and I let me add, I believe the rating agency's perspective on this, that during a recession, your reserve. Below the 30% and during healthy times, they should be a little bit above your 30%. So. You know, if if knock on wood, the 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 impact of COVID is gone by the end of 2021. We're in pretty good shape for having weather to storm with our rainy day fund and still be above the levels that people want us to be.
I mean, overall, we feel that that we have very positive signs, but again, we'll proceed with caution as we as we move forward. And the last part here was really once. The 2021 budget, the approved budget will be used as the baseline for future scenario projections as we move into the future year. So the next section is looking at the water fund. We've broken the water fund up into two major categories, the water operational side and then the water capital side. To kind of give that overview of our revenues and expenditures. So Melinda is going to provide a brief overview of water consumption and revenues.
So I got to tell you, it's kind of nice to be able to talk to you about water consumption this year. That hasn't been the case for several years, right? And I think this chart sort of helps you see that and understand it. It's one that we know has is impacted by mother nature and what happens. But really, two things happened this year. The on a good note and something that we could control and we did control is the addition of a new wholesale customer, and that's North Main. So that's one of the components driving up our consumption when you look at it compared to 2019. The other part of it is going to be driven by mother nature again. So we know we had a very dry summer. And I I I'm going to surmise that potentially some of this is related to COVID. So as we know, we're a residential community. And as folks have been staying at home, I I think it's it's not a big stretch to think that that's also helping to drive some of our consumption as well. I have no proof of that, but I'm just I'm thinking that that's got to be one of these components as well.
One. Yeah, one would think it would have to be, right? You're.
Yes.
You're flushing a toilet at home instead of at work. You're, you know, getting a glass of water at home instead of at work and. And you're probably watering your grass more because it's annoying you if it's if it's, you know, brown, right?
Or you put the kids outside and you started squirting them with the hose because you had nothing better to do. There's something you're washing your hands all the time.
Right, washing your hands all the time. That's another good one.
Right. So so that's really the takeaway that I want you to have from this particular chart. If we if we go to our next one. So. So here, when we look at this, if you know that it's really the wholesale that's driving in terms of our consumption levels. And and you look here, then and you look at the revenue source. So wholesale water makes up roughly 66%. And our residential is 32%. So residential is was a lot smaller portion of our consumption level. But when we look at the next slide, if Eric wouldn't mind. There you go. It's the rates. And this is something that was a discussion topic with some of the different trustees as we met with you individually. Which was trying to sort of understand why the wholesale rate is lower than the residential rate. And one of the things I think we were able to get folks to understand is our residential rate. Really takes into consideration not only the production of water at the water plant, but our own local distribution system. It has to pay for that. The wholesale rate is really recognizing, again, the production of the water at the water plant. And we're moving it out to our wholesale customers and then they are tacking on additional fees on top of that. The wholesale rate, it is by by. The contract, it is designed to be looked at every two years. However, we did have to do a rate recalculation this year and that was in the contract as well. And it was, again, predicated on. When North Main joined us as a wholesale customer, we expect going forward that this current rate, just because of the way the contract works. Although we do still have to look at it every other year, I expect that this is going to be our rate going forward for quite some time. The residential rate, again, because of what happened with consumption this year, we were able to hold that rate flat again.
And Melinda, part of the reason the rate isn't going to go up is that we're at. I've I've. Correct me if I'm wrong. My my recollection is we're actually at the contractual floor. And that the calculation would actually have them paying us less, but we negotiated a floor. The contract's actually very favorable to us because it basically takes all the capital expenditures we do at the plant. And allocates them through the rate to our customers. So in essence. They they are sharing in their in the cost as as our as our capital base increases, we charge a percent of that. So. When when we do something in the water plant, Glenview pays for part of it. So when, when we do something in the water plant, Glenview pays for part of it through this rate. But we're at some, the formula would say, given when North Main came on, it should be a lot lower because we've got a bigger base to spread it on, but we're at like a contractual floor, right? Which is why it's not going to go up because the formula would say it should be less. Do I get any of that right?
You did, and it's, and that's why we're not going to see a change, Bob, to your point. We're not going to see a change in this rate for quite some time, even though we're going to have to still go through this calculation piece. And you are absolutely correct. They are paying, it, it really has to do with cost of capital, which is kind of was driving that rate over time, that and consumption usage. So really, this rate is, is one, at least for the wholesale customers, is one that we should expect to see for some time going forward. And then I think when we go to our next slide, if there was no other questions, Eric's going to talk some more about the expenditures.
It was on mute. So looking over at our water operational side, we do see a slight increase in our operational expenses. We've highlighted some of the key expenditures that we plan for 2021. One of them is looking for the potential outsourcing of our utility bill printing. We also have investment in our capital equipment and capital projects, including the meter shop van, the continuation of the water plant, electrical improvements, as well as some hydraulic modeling work. But one of the other major increases is looking at, second line down, the $1.3 million transfer to the general fund. So that is captured in the other expenses category, but that transfer will be an increase from 2021.
Eric, Peter Barrow here. What if we are incurring a, a cost of $25,000 for outsourcing the printing? Is there a corresponding savings that, in excess of that?
We are in the current process of reviewing that, but we are looking at it from an efficiency standpoint within our finance department, just looking at one of those opportunities to provide a the, the level of service to, to utilize the functionality of a, of an outsourced bill printing service that can provide us a more consistent billing process. And then hopefully we will see some economies of scale that we, we do see savings in. But the cost of outs, of the outsourced of the utility bill printing is less expensive than our current in-house costs.
Do you mind if I jump in really quick?
Go ahead.
On that particular topic. So Peter, I did, there was not a corresponding $25,000 reduction in any other line item that you're going to see right away in finance. One of the things that's happening right now is the equipment that we utilize in terms of the production of the bills is, is some of this is getting to the end of its useful life and we are having to call in maintenance folks on a fairly regular basis in order to help with some of the different facets to get this out the door, as well as when we were having some different software updates, it has caused us some issues and problems. So this is one where I could tell you, it would better use of my staff time to be providing customer service and working on some other issues that we have going on in the department than literally the printing of the bill, the folding of them and getting them to the post office by a certain time so they can get out the door. The other thing that this would allow us to do is as we are trying to work towards at some point in time, producing these bills on a monthly basis instead of quarterly, there's no way right now with my current staff that we would be able to get 40,000 bills out the door on a monthly basis. It's just, we literally do not have that capacity to do it and, and we don't want to invest in the equipment and in the maintenance in order to do this. So this is actually getting us a step forward. I, I will tell you right now, this is becoming a more and more onerous situation for us because it's going to require us to invest in additional equipment and I don't think that's a good use of our time or money.
Good. Thank you.
If I could jump in real quick on the, the transfer to the general fund, that's a decision point we hold until real late in the fiscal year and we can adjust that number up or down depending on performance in the water fund as well as the general fund. So that's something we'll be coming back to the board with later next year with the final number on that. But the board may recall, in years past, we've budgeted a million dollar transfer. Sometimes we've only transferred 900,000 or 950,000 if we've had a bad year in the water fund. So that's still subject to change as we move forward.
I have a question about the water main replacements and maybe this is more of a question, you know, as we had our CIP meeting and looking forward, but I know in the future, you know, we're talking about, you know, doing a percentage of water main replacement every year and it's obviously very, very costly. But with all the street work that we've done this year, Central Avenue and with the sewer program and the neighborhood storage, do we have an idea of what percentage of our water mains we have replaced lately?
Bridgette, Dan, I don't know, you want to jump in on that?
I, I can jump in. Santa, I can't give you a percentage, but I can tell you just between the water main on Central Avenue and next year it'll be Hill Street, just west of Hibbert Park that we're replacing the water main. It's very, very, very small though. It's not even close to meeting the 1% annual replacement target that, that we'll be looking at moving forward. So while we're using, using these capital programs to take advantage of replacing a bad utility because we're building the road above it, a systematic water main replacement program is going to be very different. We're, we're literally putting in miles of water main ideally every, every year moving forward.
Thanks, Bridgette.
So looking at the overall reserve level on the water operations side, we continue to hold a steady reserve level from 2020 into 2021. We're going, we project to end 2021 with around a 38% reserve level in water operations. But to Santa's point about the water main replacement program, currently we do have some funding for that starting in 2023. We will continue to review that as we move into the future years.
That, that number seems high. Like I don't think you're held to the same sort of 30% standard for a water fund. Is that, is that high right now? And is there, is that part of a longer term plan to draw it down?
Yes, and that is part of this. So I mean, looking at the overall scope, we, it is around a $4 million reserve level. So while the percentage is high, the dollar level isn't necessarily that high, but we do have that planned drawdown in future years and that is inclusive of that water main replacement program.
Yep. Yeah, that was my recollection that there was.
But the reserve level there for both the water and the sewer is at a, it's set at 20%. We are significantly above that at this point in time.
We're also going to be taking on new debt service in the water fund, primarily for the water main intake. You know, it's a nearly $15 million project in the next five years or so. So, you know, that's another item that's going to pull down that reserve as we look to hold our residential rate as low as we can.
Moving into the sewer fund, again, providing just kind of that broad level overview of our sewer operations, you'll see that there is a negative margin in 2021 that is due to increased debt service as well as a planned drawdown for some capital expenditures. But you will see on the sewer capital side, we have significant expenses in 2021 and these are primarily attributable to the neighborhood storage project.
And, and because I asked the question, this is a timing, the negative dollars there is a timing relating to when the bond issues occur and the like?
That is correct. So I'll turn it over here to Melinda to go through the sewer fund revenues.
So, so unlike when we, well, we know that when we're talking about the consumption in the water fund, that's carrying over to in part, some of the revenues that we get or that we see in the sewer fund. So our sewer charges are derived from the consumption that is happening. So we have seen a positive impact in the residential sewer charges so far this year. The stormwater charges, I think that's one that we have talked about quite a bit this year. And I think folks are familiar with how that number is, is put together. It is not weather dependent. It is really going to be driven by the debt service and what that looks like going forward. We know with the issuance that we accomplished in the summer, the rates were, were almost half of what we had projected they were going to be. So that is going to play out in our favor for the residents going forward. It is our hope that we will see a similar market when we go next year for our next issuance, which will again, drive what we're going to see in our stormwater charges going forward. And that, that's the $15 million bond issuance that was on that page. And here is our sewer rates. The last time we did an increase was in 2019. We did think that if we continued to see the decline in consumption and its impact on the sewer fund, it didn't have as much of a reserve to be able to weather. I, I don't mean to misuse that word again, but a decline much further than what it could. We are not in that position right now. So we are not looking or projecting that we are going to need to have a sewer rate increase in the next couple of years. Again, that could change depending on what happens with consumption. But when we look at our next chart, that's the stormwater rates. And as I was just alluding to a little while ago, we had thought that our rates were going to be when we were initially putting that model together. And this was really when it was occurring was at this point last year and into the first quarter of 2020 is when we were refining the model. And then as the board made decisions going forward, it has impacted the rates. But really the, the market was favorable. Our AAA rating served us well. And I can guarantee you that the, the monthly reporting that we were doing and what we were able to show the rating agencies definitely was in our favor for us to be able to maintain that AAA rating. And how it is showing itself is in the lower rates that it's, it's going to mean for the residents going forward.
I'm sorry. So Melinda, these stormwater rates that are projected for 2021 and 2022, are those different than what we originally projected?
So 2021 is, that is a rate that we've been looking at for quite some time. It probably wasn't our rate when we initially put the model together at, at about this time last year. But the rates that you're seeing in '22, '23 and '24, those are definitely down from what you had seen originally.
Right. So in 2022, we would have originally projected to see a fee of around $292 for that, for that average homeowner. So based upon our rate and the borrowing, we, we have come down significantly in that space.
Awesome.
But I think the other part that we want to highlight here is just that 2021 fee for $175, that's really to cover the existing debt service that we have. So the, what we borrowed for phase one and phase one A, that, that $175 will pay that debt service. But the increases that you see in the future years are for those additional projects at Hibbert as well as.
Eric, Peter Barrow with one more question. If you'd go back to the prior side. After, after '23, do we envision that that all stays at, at, no, no, the, the next one, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that one. After 2024, do we project that it stays level at 335 for the average bill?
No. No, Peter, it's still, it's, and I, I can't remember the year that it's going to start flattening out, but I, I know that 335 is not the max.
And do you just kind of remember when, when we, when we hit the max and what that is?
So I, I don't want to mislead you. I, I would need to, I need to go and take a look, but I, I'm just going to tell you. I know that that's not our max rate.
Right. So I know at least looking in 2025 or a year further than that, we are expecting an increase up to around $360. But we know that as the debt gets layered in based upon each one of these projects, that we will start to see what that future impact is. But we expect by the end of 2022 that we would have a very good sense of what that future debt service is going to be out over the next 30 years, that we will be able to provide a very high quality rate forecast for, for a long period of time.
When, when it, when do you project would be the last bond issuance? In what year do you project the last bond issuance?
I think right now, I'm assuming that we're going to do another bond issuance in 2023 for phase three.
And so after that, shouldn't, shouldn't?
In 2022, right?
Twenty.
Twenty-two.
Yes.
Yeah, so 22.
Shouldn't the number be stable? After you, after we've completed all of the issuances and we know the cost for all of the issuances, should, shouldn't that number be stable?
Yes.
It may, Peter, it may build up a little bit before it, it levels out. You know, the way the debt service is layered, the principal repayment, that's all. But I think that's what Eric was suggesting, that at the end of '22, they should be able to give the, the full future because we're done issuing bonds.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you.
But, but to follow up on Peter's point to make sure I understand, when we were originally looking at kind of the fee structure and how it would increase with each of the additional debt service that we would have to include, did we project that we would have fee increases past 2024?
We did.
We did. How, and for how far, how far?
I think off the top of my head, it went all the way to 2028 where we got as high as $440. That was very early on in the process, using, you know, much higher interest rate assumptions. But the, the point was to, to stagger these increases over time to try to limit the impact on residents in the short term and spread the cost over, you know, additional homeowners who would move to town over time and benefit from the project as well.
Okay.
So again, moving over to the sewer fund expenditure side, again, we're looking at some of our major increases on the sewer operations side. We're seeing an increase in cost for our sewer televising truck, an increase in sewer main repairs. But again, the bulk of the expenditure in the sewer fund is really related to that sewer capital program for the neighborhood storage project, the electrical improvements at the pumping station and around over $800,000 for the storm sewer lining program, which we pushed from 2020 into 2021.
And even in a year when you don't have the big capital outlays, you know, if you look at the remaining pieces of the pie, you know, debt service is still four times as big as personnel. And I think as, as Tim used to say, in the sewer fund, you sort of get what you pay for. You know, want more sewer? We can, we can spend more money on sewer. We just have more debt service to pay back. And this really sort of, it, it, because it's isolated, that's not really the right word, but because it's segregated, you sort of, sewer is sewer and it's nothing else. So you really see what the cost of that service is and it's segregated so you can see it.
So again, looking at that overall impact on the reserve levels, we start the year at our, we'll start '21 at around a 39% reserve level and then we will plan to draw that down. Part of that is due to increases in our debt service, but also investment in those capital equipment purchases and sewer main repairs. So we expect to end 2021 at just around 30%, which is still a healthy reserve level, well above that 20% mark. So the next section we would like moving into is looking at our capital and debt service. So the first slide here is looking at our debt service. The chart here goes and provides a 10-year overview of our debt service. We are expecting to see an increase of around $1.3 million across all funds. But due to the refunding that we've done in the, this past year, we, we, there was a reduction from our original projection and we expect to see, or we will see reductions in future debt service payments based upon that refunding. But the chart here is really meant to indicate where there's potential capacity in the future for additional debt service for major capital projects. So if you look at that top bar, that, that black bar that's associated with the general fund, you start to see a significant drop off from 2025 to 2027. That's around the same timeframe that we would be looking at a plan, a plan for the new police station because there's additional capacity in that space to take on new debt. We also have future planned issuances, around $48 million for neighborhood storage. We also have future planned issuances around $48 million for neighborhood storage. And then also looking into the future, as Mike mentioned earlier, we expect that there will be significant water plant improvements that are going to range between 17 to 20 million dollars based upon intake improvements as well as just overall process improvements at the plant.
And there's also the plan that that some of that reduction is going to be reallocated to roads. That's consistent with sort of our longer term view on the roads, right?
Yes.
That's correct. And if you look again at page 30 in the budget document, the the tax level projections, you see those dollars move from debt service to the road program in the levy in fiscal year 26 is the big jump. So that that is there. We want to remain committed to that. And that's really why it's important for us to to hold the line on issuing debt, especially in the general fund, to give us that ability to pump up the road program to that $4 million annual level we're seeking to hit.
Yeah, I think it really speaks to that long term view that that we have of we we understand what our debt capacity is and where we can, but we're prudently planning for our future capital needs. And so with that, moving on to the 10-year capital program, we're looking over the next 10 years, we're looking at an investment of around $225 million in our infrastructure needs. You'll see the first two years, 21 and 22, are primarily made up of neighborhood storage. But then we start to see a leveling out over the next several years, a range between 15 and 22 million dollars in 23 through 25. And then when we were looking 2026, we generally see a range of project costs between 15 and 20 million dollars on an annual basis. So we really start to get to a more consistent level after we get past the next two years.
And and this includes normal recurring road program. This isn't all bonded stuff. This is the road program and and the surf and everything is in this, right?
Right. So yeah, there's a variety of funding mechanisms. Bond proceeds is only a small component of them.
Got it. Okay.
And so here, looking at our overall categories, you'll see that there are six projects that really of of the 47 projects planned that make up the preponderance of our capital program, around 85%. Having and they really speak to the priorities of the community. We're spending $20 million on neighborhood storage, $2.8 million on central, and another $2.4 million on street resurfacing. So really highlighting the key areas that we want to invest in the community. The next piece is looking at our capital at our surf fund. So these are the seven projects that we have planned for purchase in 2021, looking at upgrade for Next Gen 911, which is all grant funded. But there's several large equipment purchases in the public workspace, the dump truck, the lift truck, and the sidewalk snowplow, and then investing in equipment for the council chamber AV as well.
Oh, we lost Eric.
I was thinking it was me.
Mike, can we hear you still?
Can you hear me?
I can. We can hear you.
All right, I'm down down the hall from him, so I may run and check. Otherwise, I can I can take over the presentation potentially here. I'm going to shoot him a message, too. So bear with us one second here. All right, so let's see. Peter, am I I have to request control, right?
You think you can, Mike?
I see a screen up top. Request control.
There he is. I hear him back.
Peter Skiles, there's nothing a good upgrade can't nothing, no, no software that works well that a good upgrade can't.
I tell you.
I I think this was strategically planned.
We need more money.
Can people hear me? Yes or no?
All right.
All right. How long was I talking before I cut out?
About 20 minutes.
Pretty much just started the slide when.
You want to go all the way back to sales tax?
No. Bite your tongue.
All right. So looking at the surf fund, again, looking at those large capital equipment replacements in public works as well as investment in cardiac monitors for the fire department and the council chamber AV. But as we talked about before, these were include several of these were included on the tiers slash category listing that we would potentially look at as we move through the year.
Hey, Eric, if we may be remote, certainly for some time in 2021 and maybe for quite some time, would we hold off making the council chamber improvement repairs until we were sure that they were needed?
I feel that those upgrades would are going to benefit us from our remote perspective, that they're going to provide more consistency, that they're that it will just be create a better production value, especially as us as we are going, serving us more online.
Could I jump in for just one second? This is Peter Skiles. Also, I point out that I don't know if any of you are watching the live stream right now on YouTube, but the problem we have with the current remote meetings is the the feed goes through channel six, so the video quality is poor. It's going through a serial cable. And so especially like when a presentation like Eric's got here is up on the screen, it's very difficult to see it on the broadcast. The archive copy of the meeting is the team's quality image that we upload. So for future reference, it'll be a better quality, but like the live broadcasts are really poor. So that's one of the things that the council chambers project will address.
That's 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 actually very useful because because I don't want to say channel six is unwatchable, but it's pretty close.
And this is one of the.
And Peter, you're talking about quality, not the content, right? Quality of transmission, not the content, right?
Not the people you see, the white lines running through the screen.
There's a reason this project wasn't listed in our tiers. We're holding that system together with duct tape. It was actually one of the first projects I worked on when I came here in 2008. So a system like this that's 12 years old is long outdated and outside of its useful life. So we need to get that fixed as quickly as we can. So there's already, I think, Peter, we might have an RFP on the street already to get this project going.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Is the Next Gen 911 fully funded through a grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there there might be some small ancillary costs, but nothing of significant magnitude. So the next section is looking at our infrastructure investment. And as I mentioned before, this was historically called our engineering dedicated program. But it's really looking at the investment that we are having in our overall road program as well as some of those other major infrastructure items for the village. So the program from a general overview standpoint is funded by three main categories. It's funded through the general fund, through property taxes, home rule sales tax. It's it also includes funding from our vehicle sticker fees. It's funded through the motor fuel tax fund, which includes our allotment from the state from gallons sold on a on a statewide basis. And then looking at bond proceeds for large capital improvements such as Central Avenue. So overall, we're seeing an increase from 2020 to 2021 up to seven, just over $7 million in our overall investment in the infrastructure program. As I mentioned earlier, this is really made up of a variety of different revenues from different sources. So this is really trying to give you that programmatic overview. The highest one is looking at central bond proceeds, then looking at vehicle licenses, MFT allotments. So the couple of things I wanted to highlight here is that we are expecting to see a decrease in fuel tax receipts in the upcoming year. But the other part that is a real positive is that there are the state infrastructure bond funds that we can utilize for long term infrastructure. To date, we've received two dispersments. There's a total plan of six dispersments, and we're expecting two in 2021.
Eric, this is this is Gina. I just have a question. When you talk about central bond project or or the just the central street project, that includes the the section of Womet Avenue that that crosses it central, I assume? That's not a separate project, is it?
Correct. So that would all be inclusive of for the general for the non-water main components of that. That would be the bond proceeds.
Thank you.
And so then here we're looking at our 2021 projects that will be funding, utilizing those different funding mechanisms. So again, the largest investment component here is looking at Central Avenue reconstruction. But then kind of moving down the line, we're looking at a road program, the alley reconstruction program, which is looking to do four alleys in 2021, looking at the Brick Street renovation, which includes the 300 block of 14th Street. We're also looking at general pavement maintenance and sidewalk repairs, pavement markings throughout the village.
Hey, Eric and Mike, this might be a good spot to put up the table that I'd asked you for, which sort of compares these line items to last year. Can you guys do that without it being? Oh, wow, look at that. So I asked I asked for this because I think it's helpful to compare our infrastructure spend with prior year. And and so this is a little more detail and sort of shows you where we're spending more and less and and the like. And I thought I found it helpful instead of just saying 71 versus 56. This sort of gives you the pieces including the major projects.
Yeah, and if I could point out here, what was something important that the board's going to have to consider as we move forward and not an issue for 21, but for the future, is that when we spent considerable time in 2019 studying the road program and making sure we got to the right dollar amount to position us for the future, it was based on the expenses at the time. Since then, as you'll see in 2021, we're adding 55,000 for pedestrian improvements, $50,000 for bike plan implementation, and those are multi-year expenses. And that's going to that may take dollars away from the overall road program. So it, you know, we'll have to prioritize as we move forward or look at additional funding sources or move some things around. Not a problem in 21, but something to be cognizant of in future years before we get to that full $4 million road program funding in 2026.
Mike, what why? Why is Central Avenue 500,000, 560 less? Is that did that just get deferred into the 2021?
Yeah, it's a timing issue. We have that with a lot of our big grant funded projects. The timing, you know, Skokie Lake is the same thing, or Skokie Valley Trail or Locust. The timing gets shifted around based on the state.
And then what is what is infrastructure other where we saved 125,000? I always like other. I always like the others that are big numbers.
I, you know what? I don't know what that number is off the top of my head. I can follow up with you on that on that item. There was a project that we had planned and I I drawing a blank on it. I saw it and I knew somebody was going to draw it out.
It's Skokie Valley Trail. We had an answer. It's a Skokie Valley Trail. Those of us, those of us who are old enough to remember the Tonight Show when Johnny Carson was on, and you remember there used to be this bit called stump band? You know, and so we were we were unable to stump the staff there, Dan, with that question. All right, Peter's old enough to remember it.
Wow, Bobby, nice. Come on.
Hey, I'm.
Okay, let's let's move on. Let's go back.
So we can take this chart down. I thought that was helpful for for sort of perspective on it.
So ultimately, one of our goals here through the road program is to improve that general PCI index over time. During the 2020 budget process, there were different funding levels that were considered. And ultimately, the funding levels that were agreed upon were looking at a slight increase in 2020 in 2020 to provide an optimized program around a $2.3 million funding level from 21 through 25, and then an increase in 2026 and beyond. Overall, our intent here is to maintain a good PCI level amongst the village roads. But we we see that general increase over time as we continue to invest in our roads. So the next section is looking at a personnel overview and looking at our personnel costs. So overall, employee wages and employee benefits make up just around 67% of our about two thirds of our overall operating funds. So employee wages are expected to be around $22.8 million, which is an increase of just under 3% for 2020. On the employee benefits side, we're seeing an increase of around 7.2%. This is primarily driven by our public safety pensions. So seeing increases in both police and fire contribution. This is inclusive of that $500,000 increment to get to the 15-year rolling amortization. But you can see from the chart where the majority of our personnel expenses lie. From a personnel perspective, we have done a good job of managing the overall personnel count within the village. This chart is looking at our full time and semi full time positions since 2008. We've really tried to right size the organization to make sure that we're providing a high level of service to our community. As we move into 2021, we do have some small tweaks to the overall personnel budget. One is an upgrade of a semi full time position. Another one is in addition of a part time building maintainer to address some of our cleaning needs associated with COVID. And so those are the changes that we see in the personnel space.
Sorry, sorry, Eric, can you go back one slide? Oh, perfect. Okay, never mind. I misread it.
So looking at pensions, this is the wonderful cost that continues to grow on an annual basis. We've seen a 560% increase since 1998, just over an 8% annual growth. One component of this pension cost is IMRF. We saw positive news in 2021 associated with this. We saw a slight decrease in the rate and which accounted for about a $13,000 savings across the village. IMRF has a funding ratio right now of around 95%. Looking to the two public safety pension funds, we're looking at just over a $6 million contribution between fire and police. Like I mentioned earlier, this does include that $500,000 draw of reserves to meet our 15-year rolling amortization. But both of these funds have a funding ratio between 62 and 65%.
Yeah, it's worth it's just worth noting that if you look at some of the charts that talk about the impact of the 15-year rolling amortization, you actually do see a leveling off. Page 30 of the of the budget, the full budget document shows that you actually see a leveling off versus in sort of the the approach that most communities are taking and that the that state law mandates. You see this completely crazy hockey stick that that pops up, you know, 10 years down the road to levels that are completely unsustainable. So it's a little bit of extra pain right now that will actually make the the pensions, you know, the pension contributions level off as opposed to just keep going, going, going. So.
So great foreshadowing for the for the next slide. But again, looking at that shifted to that 15-year rolling amortization, that we do expect to see that a little bit of short term increases that we're funding through a drawdown in reserves. But as President Polinsky mentioned, we other communities are starting to see a significant roll up of costs over until 2040, where there's all of a sudden a huge clip and there's a drop off in their costs. But those are really unsustainable over time. And so moving to this 15 year is expected to save around $40 million in contributions over the next 20 years, and it smoothes out our annual contributions.
And it was also sort of a condition of maintaining our triple A. The rating agencies really have been focused on on, you know, sort of getting the pension back to sustainable, and that was promised to them a couple of years ago that we were going to transition to this. So.
Moving to the next space is.
No one, no one has an answer to this, but you do have to wonder what it's going to take for the state of Illinois to get control of this. It's 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 really amazing that that we could be in this position and and still have essentially not doing anything meaningful about it, that it that it's left to individual communities like us to to do something meaningful and unfortunately make this expense even more painful.
Well, and of course, Peter, the worst part of that is that we didn't set the number.
Right.
The folks down in Springfield told us, here's the number, and just sent the bill to our, our residents.
It leaves me speechless that, that we are incapable of doing something about this.
Looking at the employee insurance, we had positive news on the health insurance front. We saw a PPO rate of around 6% increase, but our HMO rate was came in at less than half of 1%. So that, that provided minimal growth in that overall expense category.
I'm, I'm curious, just more curiosity, what percentage of our employees take the PPO versus the HMO?
So.
Go ahead, Melinda.
Yep, so we have roughly 126 employees on PPO and 61 on the HMO plan. Just curious.
And we are in a cooperative, it's us and about 10 other communities who partner together on health insurance. It's the North Suburban Employee Benefit Cooperative. And the purpose of that is to spread our risk across these, a, a larger group. Because we're, we're still, we're too small to be self-insured on our own as our most municipalities. And we've actually benefited from the cooperative in eight of the last 10 years where our actual experience and claims have been higher. Than the, the cooperative's average. So it's, there's a big benefit to us being in the pool. We, we've seen, after years of 0% on the PPO, we've seen some pretty big increases in the past few years. 6% is lower than we've been in the last several. And we'll hopefully continue as a cooperative to get that number under control and level that off more.
All right, so the next part is moving into summary section, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
All right, good news is we're ahead of schedule. We're, we're almost through 70 slides and we're moving pretty well. So Eric, if you could flip to the next slide here. The first four bullet points, we've already talked about a lot. So what I want to focus on, on this slide are the positive indicators. You know, we, we've talked a lot about our short-term challenges and we know we have those. But there's a lot of reasons to be optimistic that we're gonna be able to maintain and improve upon our really strong financial footing. And the first is, those first two bullet points down there, there's, there's still a lot of interest in investing in our community. Both on the residential side, from new homeowners, from builders who are looking to build new homes, as well as from developers. You know, we continue to get calls on a regular basis regarding interest in, in many of our commercial properties in town. And most of those calls don't lead to proposals or don't lead to new projects. But it's indicative of the interest in our community and that we're, we're seen as a good investment. So that is certainly something to be positive about as we move forward. We talked a lot about the change in sales tax methodology. We believe the impact may be substantial. And we'll be conservative and wait and see what that impact is before we start counting those dollars and allocating them. And, and we talked about the pensions and debt service. You know, we've, we've made really difficult decisions on the pension side. But it's helped us maintain our AAA bond rating and there's light at the end of that tunnel as we're gonna see those expenses level off and decrease. So there's really reasons to be optimistic. But we do need to tackle our, our challenges in the next couple of years, especially on the structural side of the general fund. To make sure that we continue to be well-positioned moving forward. This slide is, is, is an oversimplification of our overall budget. But we do feel it's important to, to demonstrate to the board and the community how many, how much we're actually allocating in fiscal year 2021. So you'll see just over 92 million on the expense side. The, the internal service funds are included below for just under 100, but those are actually, that would be double counting those funds. So if somebody asks, our overall budget for 2021 is 92.26 million. Reserve levels, this slide here indicates that even though we're drawing down nearly $2 million in reserves in our general fund. We're still in a really strong cash position as we move into 2021. And we expect that we'll be able to maintain this, this strength as we move forward. And then this slide here, we had presented this slide last year to the board. And, you know, we've talked about the changes for 21. So what I want to focus on here is really the tax levy increase in 2022. When we presented this slide last year, that increase was over 5%. And the reason it's now under four is because of the, the great rates we had with our recent refunding. And that is taking almost, or more than, slightly more than $300,000 out of our 2022 tax levy for debt service. So that has a significant impact and benefit to our residents and our businesses. And it gives us some flexibility as we move forward and we look to address our structural deficit. So most of the numbers here, and the water and sewer rates are held flat. And you'll see the refuse fee in 24 increasing to $25. That's just a projection. That's the year our refuse contract expires. And it assumes if we go out to RFP, we may be looking at some additional expense. But we'll, we'll nail that down further as we move forward. And then next steps, we, we're gonna continue to monitor our cash flow needs. Similar to what we did earlier this year, we'll prepare a cash flow model for the board early in 21. It's especially important as we're gonna start work on Hibbard, the Hibbard Park Neighborhood Storage Project early in the year. And we're gonna hold off on issuing the debt until mid-year. And that's what gives us the flexibility to delay timing of rate increases. So we'll make sure we're monitoring that cash flow on a regular basis. But as that previous slide indicated, we, we do have a, a very comfortable level of cash on hand right now. We're gonna continue our financial modeling on a monthly basis. We've talked about reviewing the general fund and coming up with a plan to address that structural deficit. And when you read this last bullet point about budget visualizations, nobody probably had any idea what that meant. We have a, a secret slide that Eric is gonna pull up and walk us through. And it's some pretty cool work that he's done to help us, you know, better communicate the budget to our residents and to the board. And really increase our transparency. And it's a, it's a neat tool we're excited to roll out. And since we're only about two hours in, I think Eric's got some time where he'll be able to walk the board through how that tool works and how you can manipulate it. But there's a slide before that, so I'm sorry.
Right, right, we're, we're just gonna build anticipation more. So again, kind of looking at financial modeling, and we've talked about this throughout the evening, of looking at. How we are preparing ourselves to deal with potential downturns in revenues and what we would do to mitigate those impacts. So we've categorized our different revenue sources into different categories. So the first one is really looking at minimal risk, looking at our property taxes, charges for service and fines. Where we feel that these are fairly consistent revenue sources. The next part is looking at our moderate risk categories. Looking at real estate transfer tax and permits. We took a very conservative approach to each one of these revenue sources, as we did with all of our revenue sources. And we see that there is potential upside based upon recent trends in both of these categories. As we discussed, utility taxes, we don't know when that bottom's gonna happen on telecom. It'll happen at some point, but we understand that there's still some downside risk there. Our high-risk categories are really looking at home rule sales tax. We're uncertain of how that's gonna play out as we move into the next year. We've seen significant decreases in fuel tax and hotel tax based upon the pandemic. So we, we can appreciate that there's gonna be additional downside risk for each one of those categories. We talked about parking meter revenues. We've taken a projection at about 50% of revenues as we move into 2021. But we do know that there is risk in the parking meter revenues. And that there may be the need for a potential transfer from one of the other funds to help. To help provide revenues in that space. Looking on the enhancement sides, we know that there is that potential upside of around $1 million for non-recurring permits. As Mike mentioned earlier, we know that there's an upside risk, or not risk, upside potential for Loyola. As well as the Optima project. Again, we will also continue to review our different revenue sources throughout the year. And then the two that we talked at length about on income tax and sales tax slash local use tax. Is just understanding the state distributions in those spaces. We know that there's potential upside, but we, there's still a bit of uncertainty in that space. So we understand there might be a potential downside to each one of those as well. But again, we will continue to review and report back to the board on each one of these major categories. As well as our just overall revenue and expense performance as we move into 2021. So with that, we've moved, the next part is moving into the slide of looking at. Infographic, a visualization that kind of does a, a breakdown of the village's overall expenses. So what this is gonna do is it provides a breakdown of the different categories. So on the expense side, looking at personnel, contractual services. There's a middle component here looking at the department that allows you to do a breakdown of each one of the different departments. And then you can look at it from a historical perspective or a fund breakdown. I'm going to try the link and see if it works, and then we'll, we'll see if we'll be able to utilize it. All right, so with the visualization, what this allows you to do is toggle between the, the expenses and the revenues of the organization. So as we mentioned earlier, our overall 21 budget's at around $92 million. If we're to toggle over to the revenue side, you'll see this change and you'll see it update to our proposed budget on the revenue is just. At around 90.6 million dollars. And it provides a breakdown of the different revenue categories that make this up. And you can see the historical values associated with each one of these. So if you flip back to the expense side, what it allows you to do is go into further detail on each one of these categories. So if you wanted to look at the police department budget, you could click on police. And what it's gonna do is it's gonna filter everything eventually. And it's going to show you that the police department budget is made up of operations, public safety, public communications. Police services and crossing guards, and that the overall budget for police is around $10 million. This shows you the breakdown of the cost in the police department between personnel expenses, contractual services, and other expenses. Similarly, you can go through the personnel side on the category breakdown. And you can look at personnel expenses and say, okay, I wanna look at overall personnel. What makes up personnel? All right, regular wages is $21 million. Pension payments are $8.6 million. And these are the different departments of which these wages and benefits are allocated to. But you can see that historical spend on the personnel side. So if we wanted to switch back over and look at the revenue side to try to drill down into some of the different revenue categories. You could break down, you could go into sales tax, for instance. And it'll give you a breakdown of our historical sales tax revenue receipts from 2018 through present. It'll also show you the change from 2021, or from 2020 to 2021. That we're expecting about a 1.3% decrease in that space in, in, in the upcoming year. So it allows you to really drill into these different categories. You could look at residential water charges and see how that's historically performed. This one, there's no change in our, in our projection levels. But it really allows you to kind of drill into different components. And along the side here, you could choose different variables, whether it's department, program. Category that would allow you to also filter the information. So if you wanted to look at, as opposed to using the bubbles here, you could go in and choose administration. And it'll tell you that administration is made up of village manager's office, contingency, cable television. And it'll tell you what the breakdown of those different cost components are and how it's changed over time. So it's kind of a high-level overview. I, I wasn't as well-prepared to kind of walking through it as I may have liked to. But if any of you have specific questions about how the tool might work, or if you wanna spend some time going through it at some point in time. We'd be more than happy to kind of walk you through how it would work. And how you can kind of dive down into the detailed information in the village's budget.
Eric, how do we access, how do we access it?
So right now I have it stored on locally, but I have a link that I will be able, that I'd be able to send out and walk you through of how to. View that information. Ultimately, we would love to put the information out onto the village's website as a transparency tool. But we'd like to take the opportunity to kind of walk you through its functionality before. So you kind of have an understanding of how it works before, and to potentially work out any kinks or questions that we might have. We feel it's fairly well-built out, but there's always an opportunity for improvement. Or if there's other information you'd like to see as part of the tool.
Is this, this is awesome, actually. So is this gonna be updated with actual numbers throughout the year?
So this, this particular one wouldn't have actuals. This is really looking at a comparison between them.
A comparison of year to year?
Of year to year, of looking at the budget year over year. It's the, that opportunity to say, okay, our budget in 21 is comprised of these different items. There is certainly opportunity for us to go through the build-out phase, to do a comparison of budget to actuals. Just not at that point right now.
So do you see this, this is, do you see this ongoing kind of replacing the binder we get?
Certainly not. I think that the binder still has a significant amount of value of people's ability to page through, review that line.
You can't do a budget without a binder, Kathy.
I mean, sometimes you can gotta get lost in the binder, right? And forget where something is.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, but I think this doesn't replace that line item, that, that ground, that ground-up development. That the staff and everybody puts their great efforts into of understanding what makes up each one of these categories. This is trying to give that overview of, to the public of like, what are our priorities? Where do we spend our money? On the expense side, we spend $10 million on police services on an annual basis. We spend $15 million on engineering and public work. So it's, it's really trying to put some dollars to the different priorities and the different services that the village provides.
I will look forward to, you're gonna send us a private link first, right, before this goes?
That would be, that is correct.
Yeah.
Very, great job.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, second best.
All right, now let's hope I don't, all right. So back to the presentation, there's one last slide here and it's looking at our overall schedule. So we have just completed the budget workshop. So the next steps would really be looking at the introduction of the budget ordinance at the first meeting in November. Adopting the ordinance, second meeting in November, as well as the introduction of the property tax levy. And then the final property tax levy at the first meeting in December. And with that.
We, we completed the budget workshop, so if required is not required, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There used to be two of these. I think, I, I think my first few years, we had two of these.
Didn't we have three one year?
God.
You know, sent to your right, when we were like digging into. The road program the first time, when we had one at, we had one at, we had one at, at Public Works.
Right, that was when we revamped the road program at the last minute and.
Yeah, that went to like midnight and we were all like, okay, we're not making decisions tonight. Time to go home and we'll have one more of these. Yeah, that's right, so. All right, any, any questions for the staff on anything before I move to item three, which is public comment? And you guys get to hear me give the speech that I always give, even though I don't think there's any member of the public on the line right now, at least in the meeting. All right, so I will, I will move to, no, item three on the agenda, which is public comment. At an in-person meeting, individuals would be allotted three minutes and I would just ask them to raise their hands. We are not in person, obviously. So Alex, did we get any comments via email in advance? I don't recall seeing any.
We have not, no.
Okay, so if you're watching on YouTube Live, you can submit comments in the chat window. That's to the right of the video window and Alex will read them to us. And I'll now ask if there's any individuals who are connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or the phone would like to address us. If you'd identify yourself and then I will build a list and call on people if there is anyone out there. But again, I'm looking at the participants in the meeting and I recognize every name on the list, so. But just in case I missed, anybody who wants to address the board? You have to unmute yourself first. Okay, I don't hear anyone. Alex, anybody typing away in the chat window?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Okay. Before we move to other business, or let's move to other business, I will just say a couple of things. So first off, I want to thank the staff, all the staff members who are on the line. Hopefully this helped them, they're, some of them are hopefully in bed, and this helped them get to rest early tonight. This is my last budget workshop as village president. I did two village, two workshops as a trustee in those two years. And some of the longer-tenured staff members may recall the odd resident who was sitting in on this meeting in 2010, which was me. So I just want to thank everybody for all the work they do on the budgets. You know, this process has improved. While I've been here, when George Pierce was, was sitting in for Steve Leonard, he talked about budget meetings that they used to have on Saturdays that would go all day and multiple ones, and he was really very complimentary of how the process has improved. And I want to reiterate that and just thank everyone. This will be, you know, I'm, I'm starting to be a little nostalgic here as I do a bunch of last things, and this is my last budget workshop. So thank you to the staff, from me, for your professionalism and for your diligence. And frankly, the trustees, you know, being prepared for a meeting like this takes a lot of work. And if you're not prepared, and, and then, then the meeting doesn't run as well, and, and all of your fellow members of the board sort of pay the price for that. And everybody I know has put in a lot of time on this. It's 500 pages. And I appreciate that, and I know all of your colleagues appreciate it too, so thank you as well. Item five is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That was trustee Dodd. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It was Senta. So it's been moved and seconded. Eric, would you please call the role on the motion to adjourn?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Polinski.
Aye, so the motion carries. We stand adjourned at 10:03 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.